Good morning and welcome to the New York City Council Committee on Oversight and Investigation. At this time, please place your phone on vibrate or silent mode. If you want to submit testimony, send it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Once again, that's testimony@council.nyc.gov. At any time during this hearing, do not approach the dais. Thank you for your cooperation, Chair. We are ready to begin.
Thank you very much. I'm Gail Brewer, and I want to welcome you also to the Committee on Oversight and Investigation during these budget hearings. We will review the Department of Investigation's fiscal 2025 budget to understand the changes in the department's budget and how it addresses the needs of New Yorkers to comprehensively improve the way New York operates. Department of Investigation promotes and maintains integrity and efficiency in government operations across our city. DOI's fiscal 2025 preliminary budget totals $45.5 million, including $24 million for personal services to support 293 positions and $21.5 million for what we call other-than-personal services. I would like to welcome and thank Commissioner Strauber and her team at DOI for their steadfast work over the year. The Department of Investigation has successfully worked with Homeland Security in uncovering corruption at NICA. I'm sure she'll talk about that. Performed important investigations and oversight and issued policy and procedural recommendations to city agencies, all with a very restricted budget, one that I think should increase. I look forward to continuing our fruitful conversations with oversight hearings. However, we have a lot of work ahead: holding agencies accountable and ensuring public money is spent lawfully. That's number one. Today, we are interested in learning about the Commissioner's plans for the department in the coming year, including DOI's role with the city as an oversight department, which is incredibly important, its revenue-generating capacities, which is why I don't understand why there are any cuts to the agency, as well as how we can work together to improve and baseline the department's staffing needs, as I have stated. This plan did not include any new needs and decreased the department's fiscal 2025 budget by $2 million. Although there were no headcount reductions in this plan, this committee and this council is concerned that after years of reductions, the department is not adequately funded. We would like to discuss the concerns we have on its current budget at this hearing. The committee would also like to discuss budgetary decisions made by the administration and highlight the important role of oversight agencies, the important role that oversight agencies play in city government. I'd like to add that when we ask about this with OMB, we're often told, "Well, when they're staffed up completely, then they will get more funding if appropriate." And I point out, you can never staff up completely. People are going to move to other jobs. You need to have funding to do this oversight. Staffing up completely is not possible. I want to thank our committee staff and the Oversight and Investigations Division's staff for their hard work: Owen Katuski, Jack Story, Nicole Cotta, Alex Yelblon, Erica Cohen, Zachary Mahir, also from ONI, Kevin Frick, Katie Sinisi, and my staff, particularly Sam Goldstein. I'd like to now welcome and thank Commissioner Strauber, the department's investigators, background investigators, and inspectors general for the work that they do, and I look forward to hearing from the Commissioner. Thank you so much. All yours.
Thank you, Chair Brewer. Before we begin, I will administer the affirmation. DOI Commissioner Jocelyn E. Strauber, could you please raise your right hand? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to council member questions?
I do.
Thank you. You may begin when ready.
Good morning, and thank you, Chair Brewer, for the introduction. I'm Jocelyn Strauber. I have the privilege of serving as the Commissioner of the Department of Investigation, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today about DOI's fiscal 2025 preliminary budget. We have achieved a great deal over the past year. DOI has conducted complex and impactful investigations involving a range of city agencies. Many of those investigations are still ongoing. Many have resulted in criminal prosecutions and convictions, both federal and state, as well as referrals to agencies with recommendations for policy and procedural reforms. These prosecutions and investigations have targeted public officials and city employees involved in bribery and other misconduct, such as frauds related to sick leave and overtime, as well as persons outside of city government engaged in construction fraud, wage theft, and various schemes to defraud public programs. A number of our investigations were prompted by city employees and agencies reporting potentially problematic conduct to DOI, reflecting both the importance of the city's affirmative reporting obligation and the strong relationships that DOI has with the agencies we oversee. Just last month, as you are aware, DOI investigations led to arrests in two particularly significant multi-defendant cases. In early February, 70 current and former New York City Housing Authority, or NICA, employees responsible for micropurchases at the housing development level were charged by the United States Attorney's Office for the Southern District of New York with bribery and extortion charges in the largest single-day bribery takedown in Department of Justice history. Later in February, 25 defendants, individuals, and one corporation were charged by the Manhattan District Attorney's Office for providing and procuring safety training cards for city construction workers who did not actually complete the required training. This left approximately 20,000 people working on construction sites without the safety training required by local law and the Department of Buildings. In both of these matters, DOI issued recommendations that have been accepted and are in various stages of implementation by NICA and DOB, respectively. We issued nine public reports in 2023 on topics including the New York City Police Department's Criminal Gang Database, the negative impacts of excessive police overtime, fire safety and prevention at NICA, and fraud by certified asbestos investigators, among others. Each report contained detailed recommendations in each of these areas. We issued a report in January 2024 concerning data maintenance and reporting at the Department of Homeless Services Prevention Assistance and Temporary Housing, or PATH, intake center. As we have additional reports, and we have additional reports in the pipeline to be issued in the coming months concerning parking placards, the handling of the Jacob Riss-NICA Development Water Crisis, where a development's water was incorrectly deemed to be contaminated with arsenic, as well as NYPD's use of surveillance technology. We are also supervising 11 integrity monitorships, in which DOI selects and supervises an outside firm to provide oversight of either vendors that have historical integrity issues but provide a critical city service, or of large-scale, high-budget city projects. Eight of the 11 monitorships are vendor-focused monitorships, and those are funded by the vendor. One monitorship of the large-scale budget project monitorships, one relates to post-hurricane Sandy rebuilding. That one is actually funded by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. And the last two monitorships of city projects are city-funded, and those include the Asylum Seeker Initiative, for which DOI has retained KPMG as the monitor, and the Borough-Based Jails Construction Project, for which DOI has retained K2 Integrity as the monitor. And I'll discuss the budget implications of these two monitorships a little later on. In addition, DOI's investigations recoup funds for the city. In fiscal year 2023, our investigations resulted in the return of $2.1 million to the city, and in the first four months of fiscal year 2024, that number is $1.3 million in returns. And we expect more financial recoveries to be agreed to and ordered this fiscal year. Also, in fiscal year 2023, $10.1 million in recoveries were agreed to and ordered to be collected in future years. In the first four months of fiscal year 2024, the number agreed to and ordered is $3.4 million. As these examples of our work reflect, many of our major indicators in calendar year 2023 and in the first four months of fiscal 2024 are on the rise or have remained steady, including complaints received, recommendations issued, active investigations, and arrests made. For a full view of our work in calendar year 2023, our year-end release is attached to the written submission of my testimony. These accomplishments are significant under any circumstances, but especially so in light of the headcount cuts that DOI has sustained over the past few years, as well as the departure of many highly skilled and experienced employees to higher-paying jobs in the private and public sectors. The work of the past year is a testament to the dedication, hard work, and talent of the entire DOI staff, who manage our operations and our investigations, many of whom had not received raises for several years and who were among the last employees in the city to receive a cost-of-living increase, because over 95% of our team are managerial or original jurisdiction employees. Our staff are deeply committed to DOI and its mission, and I and the entire DOI executive team could not be more grateful to them. We are honored to have the opportunity to work with them each and every day. Let me turn now to our 2025 preliminary budget. DOI's fiscal year 2025 preliminary budget is $45.5 million, $24 million for personal services, and $21.55 million for other-than-personal services. At the start of fiscal year 2025, as it has in previous years, DOI anticipates receiving an additional $1.6 million in intra-city funds from other agencies that support a portion of our staffing. The total fiscal 2025 budget will support 465 employees, 315 funded by DOI's budget, and the remainder through Memoranda of Understanding arrangements with other city agencies and public authorities, including NICA and New York City Health and Hospitals. DOI is a small agency that runs an extremely lean operation. Our core mission to investigate corruption, fraud, and other wrongdoing, to make recommendations to improve how city government works, and to ensure public transparency about what we do, requires a team with diverse skills and experience, made up of inspectors general, investigators, attorneys, auditors, data analysts, statisticians, digital forensic experts, information technology experts, and executive and administrative staff. The success of our work depends on all of the people who power our agency. As a result, DOI is hit particularly hard by mandated budget reductions. We do not have programmatic initiatives or discretionary obligations that can be easily cut to satisfy programs to eliminate the gap or pegs, and thus, reducing vacant positions has been our primary tool to meet reduction targets. To that end, between fiscal years 2021 and 2024 budgets, 50 budgeted positions have been eliminated to satisfy mandated cuts, reducing our budgeted headcount by nearly 14% from 365 at the end of 2021 to 315 as of this week. DOI has worked hard to fill all of its budgeted positions and to reduce its vacancies. Just prior to the hiring freeze, in August 2023, DOI successfully reduced our vacancies to just 19 positions. Since the hiring freeze, that number has risen to approximately 30 vacancies. While we are actively recruiting for every vacancy, a miscalculation from a prior peg created a funding shortfall that is limiting our ability to fund all of our vacancies. We are currently in discussions with OMB on how best to resolve this issue. It is our position that a resolution would require OMB to return nearly $1.06 million to DOI's personal services budget and DOI to reduce approximately 15 unfunded headcount. We expect that this issue will be resolved in the upcoming executive budget. In order to retain staff, we have fought hard for salary adjustments and created a path to promotion for our investigative staff, as well as improved basic training for them. We know our efforts are working. From February 2023 to February 2024, we have reduced our attrition rate from 16.7% to 9.3%, and our hiring rate has increased from 10.6% to 12.1%. The fiscal year 2025 preliminary budget, taking into account pegs from fiscal years '23 and '24, is 20% less than our current modified fiscal year 2024 budget of $57.17 million. Over the course of the five years covered by this financial plan, DOI has committed $19.9 million in baselined peg savings to the city. For the November 2023 peg, DOI made a $2.04 million reduction in fiscal year 2024 in the cost of the BBJ construction monitorship. This reduction was made possible by the delayed start in work on that project, such that the need for monitoring in that period was significantly reduced. For the January 2024 peg, OMB set a baseline peg target of $1.9 million for each year between fiscal years 2024 and 2028. To meet that peg, DOI cut an additional $400,000 from the BBJ monitorship and $1.5 million from the OTPS budget by reevaluating some of our infrastructure and maintenance needs, such as telecommunications and vehicle maintenance and repair. Because DOI's OTPS budget largely consists of nondiscretionary obligations, such as rent, we have limited flexibility in this area. As a result, to avoid a disruption in operations, we offset the cuts in fiscal year 2024 by reprogramming $1.6 million in federal forfeiture funds, in accordance with United States Department of Justice guidelines. DOI also reprogrammed $3.4 million in federal forfeiture funds, in accordance with DOJ guidelines, to meet the out-year peg targets for fiscal years 2025 through 2028. Additional forfeiture funds may need to be reprogrammed to meet the full target going forward if other projected OTPS savings are not realized. I want to be clear that while DOI is permitted to reprogram forfeiture funds in this context to manage the impact of citywide budget cuts, DOJ guidelines expressly prohibit the city from making budgetary decisions based on DOI's federal forfeiture funds. The guidelines require that federal forfeiture funds supplement, not supplant, our budget. Were forfeiture funds to be considered in determining our budget per DOJ guidelines, we could lose access to federal forfeiture funding. I understand, of course, that DOI is not the only agency facing significant budgetary difficulties, but the reality is that smaller agencies like us feel a greater impact from so-called "across-the-board" cuts that nominally apply equally to all agencies. I want to reiterate what I said during last year's budget testimony, because it continues to be relevant to the current discussion. To fully fulfill our mission and to operationalize certain measures needed to promote efficiency, DOI will need more staff in our investigative squads and in other units across the agency. And while we are only one agency in a city government that must address numerous critical needs, our mission is to maintain efficiencies and ensure integrity and appropriate use of resources citywide, a particularly vital function in the current environment. Let me turn now to our monitorships. With respect to DOI's proactive monitorships, the ones addressed to large-scale city projects, the cost of hiring an outside monitoring firm is included in DOI's overall budget. The city has appropriately funded these monitorships in connection with large-scale, resource-intensive city projects, where oversight protects against the risk of fraud, waste, and misuse. It is important to recognize that DOI's budget for monitorships is used solely to hire outside monitoring firms, whose work provides a benefit to the agency or agencies supervising the project and to the city overall. These funds do not support any additional DOI headcount or other DOI resources, although DOI devotes significant staff time to supervising the monitor. That work includes developing an oversight strategy, conducting site visits, reviewing and evaluating reports, holding regular meetings with the monitor, sharing information or red flags with the relevant stakeholder city agencies and offices, pursuing investigations as appropriate where misconduct is identified, and making any necessary policy and procedural recommendations for reform. DOI has just three staff working to manage all of DOI's monitorships. We also utilize inspector generals and their staff throughout the agency to participate in investigations that may arise from the monitorships and to conduct some oversight as appropriate. Let me describe in a little more detail the scope of the two proactive city-funded monitorships that we are currently managing. The city has budgeted nearly $6.9 million over 18 months, from July 2023 to December 2024, for oversight of the Asylum Seeker Initiative, to be paid to KPMG, the firm selected by DOI to serve as the outside integrity monitor. The city has budgeted $13.1 million over nearly five years, from July 2023 to June 2028, for the Borough-Based Jails Construction Monitorship, to be paid to K2 Integrity, the firm selected by DOI to serve as the integrity monitor for that project. Let me now take a moment to speak to some important DOI initiatives recently undertaken to strengthen our oversight role. As I mentioned earlier, DOI staff is the foundation for all the work that we do, and I am grateful for their continued commitment to this agency and to the work of improving integrity, efficiency, and transparency in New York City government. I am pleased to update the council on an initiative that DOI has pressed consistently for over the past year and which OMB recently approved: salary increases for DOI's Assistant Inspectors General, critical supervisors within our investigative squads who directly oversee our investigators and who report to our Deputy Inspectors General. These increases were part of a larger self-funded retention effort and followed similar self-funded salary adjustments for our confidential investigators, inspectors general, and deputy inspectors general, which we completed last year. As a result of this plan, we have created a clear promotional path for our investigative staff and provided raises, promotions, title realignments, and parity adjustments for nearly everyone in the agency over the past 18 months. While retention continues to be a challenge, these raises and promotions have been critical to DOI's efforts to retain experienced staff. I am thankful for the council's support on these efforts and for OMB's approval. I now want to mention three other initiatives that we began in 2023. At the end of the year, we restructured our Law Enforcement Technology Unit, which, as its name suggests, provides investigative technology that is critical to our cases, such as opening seized phones and recovering stored or deleted materials. This restructuring, which included new leadership for the unit, is focused on ensuring that we obtain and use cutting-edge investigative technology. We have begun to cross-train staff across the enforcement technology subunits, which include digital forensics, technology services, and e-discovery, to expand employee skills and knowledge bases, promote career growth, and provide increased assistance to our investigative squads. We have also implemented a technology liaison program to train confidential investigators outside of this Law Enforcement Technology Unit in the use of law enforcement technology to build their skills in this area for use in their investigations, and so that they can educate their colleagues about the use of advanced investigative technology. In late 2023, DOI embarked on an effort to strengthen the impact of our policy and procedural recommendations, known as PPRs, a critical part of our preventative work to reduce the risk of fraud and corruption by strengthening internal controls and oversight within the city. The public can view our recommendations on our website through a searchable portal. Our PPRs promote transparency in government, accountability by city agencies, and participation by other governing bodies and the public in DOI's anti-corruption work. In order to strengthen the impact of our recommendations, in late 2023, we began a thorough review of our outstanding PPRs to identify those recommendations that have not yet been implemented by the agencies and to determine which recommendations remain viable and warrant further dialogue with the relevant agencies or with City Hall. Finally, we are in the very early stages of an effort to expand DOI's direct access to city agency databases, so that DOI can conduct data analysis to identify potential corruption and fraud. Several years ago, DOI invested in a standalone data analytics team, and their work has shown what DOI can accomplish with access to city data. For example, we regularly review city time data to flag potential instances of employees stealing time and taxpayer dollars. Our data analytics team has utilized geolocation data, including in a recent investigation that led to federal charges against a man who allegedly stole 16 utility vehicles belonging to NICA worth hundreds of thousands of dollars. The data analytics team is also involved in an array of ongoing investigations. Our goal at this stage is to assemble larger data sets and to conduct more sophisticated searches for patterns that can provide leads to further investigations. With respect to our anticipated new needs requests, DOI plans to submit new needs for the upcoming executive plan. Although in light of the recent pegs, and even with the realignment that we are discussing with OMB, we do not have the resources to fully self-fund these new needs. DOI plans to submit a $1.3 million city tax levy, personal services funding request, and a $6.5 million capital funding request for consideration. These requests reflect essential operational needs for DOI to effectively and proactively carry out its mission. We expect that the expense requests will include funding to support the hiring of 20 staff in total, 18 on the investigative side, including investigators, auditors, data analysts, and forensic experts, as well as two staff members for the Information Technology Unit. Sufficient investigative staffing, including in these uniquely skilled areas, is central to DOI's mission and work, and our squads are currently understaffed. We continue to respond to an increasing number of complaints and maintain a large investigative docket, but with fewer people placing a significant burden on our existing staff. These limitations also restrict our ability to conduct proactive data analysis and investigations. The capital request would support the purchase of a new financial planning and analytics program, along with an upgrade to our firewall and cybersecurity infrastructure. In conclusion, our mission is critical to protecting and preserving public funds and public confidence in city government. The city's support of a watchdog agency like DOI is a testament to its commitment to integrity, efficiency, and good government. I thank you for your continued efforts to ensure that we have the resources necessary to fully fulfill our mission, and I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Commissioner, for excellent testimony. We've been joined by council members Ayella and Councilmember Williams, and I think you had excellent testimony, but I think the word "placard" would be something that both of my colleagues would be very happy to know that you are going to be observing and investigating. That comes up all the time. I'm sure they'll have questions, but I know you've covered some of this, but I just want to understand the budget requests for FY '25, and I know last year's there was certainly investigative and complaint unit and data clerks and a timekeeper. I know you mentioned it, but just so everybody can hear, what are your exact requests for '25? And I thought it was good that you made it clear that forfeiture is not part of this. I know for sure that even when you get state money or federal money, you're not supposed to supplant it, so that's the same with forfeiture.
That's correct.
And I also know that the monitors are separate. Just to, I, last year, for the last two years, I've been trying to get funding through OMB, and I'm hoping this year might make a difference, and I noticed that you have had some conversations with them. So if you could just be a little bit even more specific about what your request is and what it would cover.
Sure. In terms of the needs that we're requesting, it's really 20 additional staff. That includes two information technology personnel. That's really an operational need. And the remaining 18 staff will be and will determine the precise allocation among these categories, but we are looking for additional confidential investigators, roughly 11 or so probably out of that 18. And the other positions would be split among what I would describe as, you know, skill-specific positions that serve our investigations. So that would be auditors, data analysts, digital forensic experts who can help us with the investigative technology side of our investigations. And I just want to note that some of the categories that you mentioned that were in our new needs request last year, such as a complaint unit and certain data entry clerks, those are all, I think, you know, very significant, those would be very significant improvements as well, but given, you know, the pegs and the budget cuts and the attrition that we're dealing with, we're asking for the sort of fundamentals to conduct our investigations. Those positions, if we're able to get them in the future, clerks, et cetera, those will help make, they will take some of the administrative burden from our investigators, and those would be wonderful positions to have, but given where we are now, we're sort of going back to the basics and trying to make sure that we have the full complement of investigative staff that we need.
Okay. And again, in your testimony, you talked about some of the work that you're doing. My question would be, what would you be able to do, in other words, maybe you have a backlog, what would you be able to do that you can't do now with this increase in staffing? Obviously, you know, you talked about some of the needs that you have, technology, et cetera, but if you could just be more specific about maybe generally, because you can't say everything that you're working on.
Mm-hmm. So one area where I think we would like to spend more time would be on proactive investigations, and what I mean by that are investigations that are not complaint-driven, that don't necessarily relate to wrongs that we can see or that are reported to us, but that involve doing data analytics and other sort of more sophisticated, creative investigative steps to identify problems that haven't yet surfaced, that might not yet be the subject of complaints. When we're dealing with responding to a significant volume of complaints and sort of responding to the significant problems in the city that we can see, we have we have less time to set aside for that kind of proactive work, which I think could ideally have a significant preventative effect as well if we can catch problems in a smaller stage before they become more significant. So that's one area where I think additional staff would be extremely useful. You know, the other area is that I think there is often in investigations that you conduct, if you have the time and the resources, a way to go a level deeper, right? Where you may see a problem and you may be aware of a person or persons engaging in misconduct. If you have the time and the resources to commit, you can sometimes sort of fan out from that and see whether that problem, you know, is actually multiplied across multiple people that maybe haven't come to your attention initially. Now, we do that when we can, but I think we could do more of it. A sort of good example of a real sort of deep, sustained dive into an investigative area that yielded significant results is the recent NICA arrest, right? It takes significant time and resources to do a case of that nature. The hope would be that we could do more things like that, assuming that the cases and the misconduct is out there, if we had a bigger staff. We would at least be able to kick the tires, I think, a little bit more. And we are endeavoring to do that in all the cases that we do. But these limitations are, you know, are real, obviously.
Another limitation, and Chair Ayella had a hearing on this, which I attended in general welfare, was what you did with the path and the issues regarding all of the individuals who are applying to be part of shelter. These are usually New Yorkers, not the migrants. And so my question to that would be another example, and the chair might want to jump in, is that it was a little upsetting to me that the recommendations had not been followed in a timely basis. In other words, you did that DOI discussion of what happened, and I would think that there would have been more response. There was eventually, I understand that, but more of a response. Because in order to get people to follow recommendations, you actually have to stay on top of them. I've learned that over the years. Is that an area where you could also use more staff? Or is that something that you feel you're doing appropriately? Because I know there are many recommendations, even preceding your tenure, that may not be followed.
Well, this is an area that we have recently refocused on, where we're going back to make sure that we're really following up on those historical recommendations. And that's something that I think we are now doing and will be doing, you know, some significant work in. But certainly having more people available to have those conversations, it not only means that we can do more of that work, but I think we can do it at a faster pace. You know, the report that you alluded to, these are real deep-dive efforts. They take a lot of work on the part of a lot of people, and folks have just so many hours in the day. So if we have more people, we can, A, get some of this work done more quickly, which I think is important, to be able to come back to the public and give them the results of our investigation and enable the agencies to take the necessary actions that we recommend more quickly. So that's one way in which I think additional staff would be helpful. And I think there are also some areas that we might be able to spend more time on, like following up on our outstanding recommendations if we had more staff.
Okay.
Absolutely.
We're delighted to have Councilmember Ressler. Do you have questions? I'm delighted to have Councilmember Ressler. Go ahead.
Councilmember Ayella. We're all excited that you're here, Councilmember Ressler. I guess the follow-up question to that is if DOI is making recommendations. I know it seems, it's on, it's just low. If DOI is making recommendations to DSS to implement, you know, policies and procedures to capture data accurately, does DOI then have the capacity to go back, I mean, well, to go back and ensure that those, that the agency is following those recommendations? Or are they then expected to report back to you? How does that work?
Well, I think it's sort of an iterative process. So we have a back and forth with the agency first to make sure that the recommendation is actually being implemented and to check on the status. But if we want to do sort of a separate gathering of data or review of information to ensure that even after a recommendation is accepted and implemented, that the agency is really following that procedure consistently, then that would be another type of inquiry that we would need to undertake. And do we have the resources to do it? Sort of yes, we do, but not necessarily for every recommendation in every case across every squad.
Absolutely. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Williams, you had some questions? I'll ask many later. Go ahead.
Yes, okay. I have one question. Well, two. So my question is regarding the procurement process. So we're doing participatory budgeting, and something like a bathroom is very, very expensive. And we've heard reasons for high costs is supply chain issues, inflation, and COVID. But, you know, we believe there might be other reasons that are too overstated since this issue preceded these reasons. One conversation that we've been having in our office that identified the city record, which is where agencies put their requests, is not reaching out to as many providers, which makes the pool small enough, and it does not introduce competition. So can you elaborate on DOI's approach to monitoring the procurement process to ensure taxpayer dollars are spent efficiently and effectively?
So we, you know, we don't, we don't do sort of auditing of agencies' procurement processes generally. If there was a specific issue, like perhaps the issue that you're identifying, that would be something that we could look at, and we would do, I would imagine, the same type of, you know, review we do with any policy and procedural issue. We would see what are the agency's policies? Are those policies being followed? And you could use data analytics in this area as well. If there are costs that appear to be, you know, outsized, above what they should be, you can try to identify who are other vendors out there that provide this service? What's a reasonable cost? That kind of thing.
Okay, so only like when prompted, not proactively like reviewing?
Well, we could do it proactively. I'm not aware that right now we're doing a proactive review of a particular procurement process, but it's certainly something that we could do if an issue was brought to our attention. We could also do it proactively. It would be the sort of thing that likely would be guided by some kind of data analytics work that showed a mismatch in costs that one agency was spending as opposed to others, or a mismatch in pricing versus what market pricing appeared to be, that kind of thing.
Okay. And the other question I have is another bill that we were working on having to do with CCRB and NYPD is access, easier access to NYPD body cams. This was a big holdup in CCRB and cost a lot of time and resources. And so just wondering, macro level, how much difficulty and effort DOI faces when trying to gain data access from any respective agency and how that affects your budget?
Right, well, that's a broad question, and it does vary to some extent, depending on the agency that you're talking about. I would say with the NYPD in particular, we have developed a very good relationship, our contacts with their legal department and with others have enabled us to get, you know, the materials that we need for our investigations on a very reasonable timeframe with respect to body cam footage in particular. You know, we have not, there's a redaction process. It can take time to get body cam footage. We have not experienced challenges in that area that have negatively impacted our investigations. We did make some recommendations a number of years ago regarding access to body cam footage that are in various stages of implementation.
Yeah, and that was just an example. But I guess just wondering overall, like, I'm sure you might have, I'm looking at the type of people you have working for you, but I'm sure you have people that are like collecting data, collecting information. And so if you have to get information from an agency, does that at all affect your ability, your scopes of work? How much work you have to do in collection of the data from said agencies? Like, is it a seamless process? Or is it a little bit more cumbersome to work with agencies when you're trying to grab different forms of whatever type of data that you need to conduct your investigation?
Yeah, I think it really depends on the type of data. I mean, typically, if there are delays in receiving data, that definitely can delay our investigations, and that can happen. If there are privacy concerns, for example, there may be a need for an agreement to ensure that DOI will treat the data, you know, with the security that it requires. We've had a very productive working relationship with OTI to ensure that we're able to get what we need while fulfilling all of the requirements relating to the privacy laws. So I don't have a, you know, particular concern about how this is working now, and, you know, we have a sort of tight process within the office of escalating any delays that might occur so that I or other members of the executive team can address them with the relevant agencies.
Welcome to Councilmember Jaeger. Picking up on Councilmember Williams, one bathroom at the Parks Department, one building with, I guess, I don't know if it's male, female, gender neutral, eleven million dollars, that's what it costs. So I do think you have a point there, Councilmember, and something, it could do an audit on it, but proactively across the board is every single Parks Department bathroom, eleven million dollars or more. So that's, she's got a point there. It's just unbelievably expensive. And then second, if you could elaborate because of, I know that there is an IG fairly recently at the Police Department. And if you could elaborate what staffing needs she has or needs or vacancies and anything that you could say about her budget?
So I think the current staffing in that department is eighteen, we have eighteen staff members and I think four vacancies. As we think about filling vacancies, obviously, we're in a two-for-one hiring situation. So we have to consider with every vacancy we have, what is our highest priority, you know? And who have we already interviewed and identified? Who might be waiting on us to be able to start them? Who they might lose? So we can't always, you know, we've got to prioritize among the different groups. I think right now, we have sufficient staff in that group. We would like to be able to fill those four additional vacancies to bring them back up to a twenty-two-person unit. As you know, that unit put out a number of significant reports last year. We have other reports in the pipeline for this year, including an upcoming annual report and the report on the Post Act. Those are both mandated reports. So again, we could use additional staffing across the board, but relative to where we are, that unit at twenty-two, I think, will certainly be sufficient, and that would require filling the four additional vacancies.
Okay. So I think your head count is three fifteen with, I think you said twenty-eight of thirty vacancies at this time?
I think it's thirty at this time.
Thirty, that's what you said, yeah. And so my question is, yeah, it is not easy to hire in today's environment, given salaries and competition and so on. So I just wanted to know how you're going about it and, you know, maybe what positions fall in the one-for, the two-for-one hiring rule, et cetera? In other words, where are you in terms of trying to do the outreach and hiring?
So we're sort of proceeding on all fronts, I would say. I mean, we have, we have a, you know, we are making robust efforts to reach out to, you know, law schools, universities, particularly local ones, to ensure that we have a pipeline of interested graduates. We attend career fairs, we're very active on social media. We have active internship programs throughout the year and the summer, which are good ways to introduce, you know, potential future full-time hires to DOI. In terms of the two-for-one process that OMB has in place, we are certainly asking for exemptions to that process because we have some significant needs that we feel should not have to wait on the sort of two-for-one, you know, hiring timeline. We'll have to see how those asks and that dialogue, you know, pans out. I would say that there are certain positions, you know, auditors are one, where it is very hard to hire the staff that we want at the salaries that we offer, and it's particularly hard to retain staff. So that's an area where, and this is another aspect of our new needs that I think I did not mention, we're interested in trying to raise the salaries for those, for that particular category. So we are, you know, we are moving forward aggressively to identify people to fill all of our vacancies. And I just helpfully received a note that says we have fourteen of thirty, fourteen of the thirty vacancies, we've identified candidates for those. But being able to fill those is dependent on getting approval either for exemptions for the two-for-one process or, you know, having something else open up. And plus, as I said, we do need additional funding for a number of these spots to be filled.
What's your current attrition? Do you know, is that something that's manageable? Very frustrating when OMB says, you know, the same thing. I keep telling them, they say you have to be fully funded. You can't be fully funded if you're tritting because somebody has an opportunity elsewhere, because the salary's not high enough.
Our current rate is nine point three percent, which is better than it was. But certainly, if the standard is that we have to get down to zero vacancies, I'm not sure how, and that is the condition on which we will have additional headcount? I am not sure we will ever get there. I don't think DOI has ever gotten there.
I don't think any agency does or any company does. And I think it's a ridiculous mandate that has to be fulfilled. And particularly when you're focused on staffing. This is not an agency that contracts out. You have staffing needs, period. That's what you do. And so the notion of zero is, to me, not reasonable. So we all argue that. So I appreciate that you've been doing the same. Every time I say something, OMB says, oh, we're talking to them. I say, well, you're not making any sense. I also have a question just about the, all the monitorships. I know you mentioned the two in particular, the two larger ones. So with the borough-based jails, lots of conversations in the last couple of days with budget hearings, you know, delay, not delay. It looks like it's going to be twenty-nine before even Brooklyn is done. That's the general feeling. So how does that impact? I know that there was a reduction because of the delays, but there's still demolition going on. I just want to hear a little bit more about how you are going to be approaching in terms of the funding and the monitorship of the borough-based jails.
Right, well, the reduction that we were able to achieve didn't in any way limit the work of the monitorship because the construction wasn't at the stage where monitoring was necessary. And even though construction has not yet fully started, even on the initial project, we are involved, and K2, the monitor is involved with DDC and with Tudor Perini, I believe, is the, you know, is the entity involved. We are involved currently in meetings and discussions to make sure that we're providing the foundation for the construction monitorship at this early stage. And that was K2's recommendation. We agree with that, DDC agrees with that. So we're all on the same page so that the work of ensuring that the right, you know, rules and policies are in place is starting even before the construction actually begins.
Okay, and so what will you be looking at specifically? Probably, will it be vendor integrity? What kind of things will a monitor be looking at? This is a big project.
I mean, it's a wide range of things, but certainly it's vendor integrity. It's the procedures in place to ensure that if there is overspending or waste, that that is identifiable and that there are people who are looking at that, whether there's people at DDC who are looking at it, there are people at the monitor who are looking at it. So it's really about putting in place a sort of preventative web of procedures so that if there are problems, they can be identified and promptly addressed.
Okay, and you think, has this been something that up to now you feel hasn't needed the full throttle? It'll take timing on the construction? Or do you, has these issues come up not yet? In other words, I assume it's construction, although I know in Manhattan, it's very complicated. It's in the middle of Chinatown. You've got neighborhood issues. My understanding the other day, I don't know for sure, there's a wonderful senior program and housing right next door, and there were some concerns about that building, it's a very small building, and the demolition. So there are already issues, I would assume.
I mean, I think the work that we're able to do at this stage is sufficient to address the issues that the construction is posing before it gets fully underway, and that would involve demolition. It would also involve planning and other, you know, construction-adjacent types of work. And I think we have the funding and we worked, you know, hard to ensure DDC also felt comfortable with the level of funding and attention we were able to give this even with the cuts. I think so far, we're okay.
Okay. Same issue on the asylum seeker. That's a larger issue, even more current. I was wondering if you could just talk a little bit about that. Certainly in this committee, certainly all of the wonderful staff at ONI as well as general welfare, I think we've been up knee-deep in contracts, and so have you. So if you could just talk a little bit about whether you reallocated staff to this issue, figuring out what the investigations might entail. I have to say, from my perspective, too much money's being spent on security. Too much money's, we can't get anything from DocGo personally. Maybe you've been able to do that. The hotel contract has been helpful. The companies have been sending to ONI some of their information, more so than from the city. So this, to me, needs a lot of integrity, shall we say.
Well, let me speak to the work that we are doing. So KPMG began with site visits to get an understanding of how things were really working on the ground. So that was the first phase. We then moved to assembling in a single database that city agencies have access to, all of the contract information, at least everything that we could get our hands on from all of the different agencies that are participating in the asylum seeker effort. And as you know, there are many. And the goal of that database and the way it operates now is you can look at all of the vendors across the city and see what they're charging for different services, security, food, et cetera. And my understanding is there have been some changes in the way food is contracted and paid for, in part because of what we saw in terms of discrepancies and what was sort of revealed by this database exercise, which enabled you to compare the costs of the various services provided across agencies and across the city. KPMG is also doing a risk analysis that's based on a number of factors, the site, the contract, the nature of the service, the price, et cetera, to try to identify particular contracts or particular sites or particular areas where there should be more attention. And depending on what the issue is, that will be the subject of additional site visits. And depending on what the issue is, that will be the subject of additional site visits. If we have a concern about a particular contractor, there will be a sort of deeper dive and audit of their invoices to ensure that they're actually substantiating the costs that they're submitting to the city. So, and the goal of this monitorship, which is, you know, somewhat unique in its scope, is that we are endeavoring, unless there's some sort of criminal investigation that spins out of this, which is a separate issue, we're trying to share in real time with the agencies all of the information that we can. So, if there's an issue at a site visit, we're not sort of holding on to that till we can fully investigate it. We're sharing it with the various folks at City Hall who are running this effort and the relevant folks at the agencies. Same issue with contracting concerns if we think we see overspending. So, the goal is to make sure that everyone is armed with the information and can make better decisions as a result.
Do you share with the public what you share with the agencies? In other words, if...
Not in real time, no.
Not in real time?
No.
So, you do it at some point?
Well, we may at some point have some sort of report that we issue that relates to sort of lessons learned in emergency contracting, perhaps. I don't, I don't know that we will. It may depend on what we find. But I think the most efficient way to make sure that information, even information that may not be particularly problematic, but that somebody should know about and act on, gets shared sort of in real time with the agencies handling it.
Okay. I may ask more about this. Welcome to Councilmember Joseph and Councilmember Russell has questions.
Thank you so much, Chair Brewer, and I just want to say how honored I am that you were delighted not once, but twice by my presence. Just kidding. Okay. So, I have a series of questions, Commissioner, so thank you so much for making the time to be with us today. I just want to first ask about the DOI's role on monitoring the Borough-Based Jail construction. I'm broadly and strongly supportive of the Borough-Based Jail plan. I have been deeply frustrated by DDC and the city's management of the demolition process, which has been severely disruptive for my community. I have dozen-plus buildings that have experienced months of intense vibrations, and the contractor barely agrees to, barely shows up to meetings with me. So, I'm just trying to understand what role have you guys played? Because we haven't heard from DOI at all in this process. The city has not done nearly as good a job as it needs to in managing and mitigating, managing the demolition process and mitigating impacts. And if this was a private contract, a private development, it would have been shut down months ago. Like, I never would have let DOB operate, DOB never would have let an operator treat our community the way that DDC and North Star has so far. DDC's testifying later this afternoon, so they'll get the full brunt of this. But what, if anything, has DOI done to help mitigate this? Are you aware of just how awful a job North Star has done in terms of the enormous community impacts that they've caused and the severe vibrations that have been a result of their haphazard work?
So, these are not concerns that I've been made aware of. I do want to be clear that our monitorship is focused on construction, and it's focused on ensuring that the city's funds are being spent well and appropriately, right? That they're not being wasted, that they're not, that we don't have, you know, unlicensed or unqualified people working on these jobs, that kind of thing.
Yeah. For months, this project has gone on from 7:00 AM until 11:00 PM every single day, all day Saturdays, worked on federal holidays. So, if we're maximizing the efficiency of spending to cause severe disruptions for our communities, then I don't, and if that's the oversight role that you're playing to make sure that money is well spent and the vendors are operating with integrity, I, there are real questions for me about how everybody involved in this process has been making decisions. And I want to see Rikers Island closed as urgently as anybody else in the city of New York, I promise you, certainly much faster than this mayor. But I am deeply concerned with how this project has been handled. So, it doesn't sound like you've been involved in it in ways that have impacted our community directly. You're just looking to make sure that the vendors are operating with integrity.
That's right. But I do want to say, if there are things that you're observing that you think raise integrity issues, you should communicate that with us, and we can have a separate discussion on that. I don't know whether...
I can send you all the pictures I sent to DDC and City Hall of the fence being down for hours upon hours on end for a block long, where people can just enter into the construction site, the dust plumes that we've been experiencing, the severe vibrations and the shaking of buildings, the cracks in walls, all of these issues that, to me, are indicative of a contractor that is not doing its job well. And the fact that they don't even show up to meetings with me tells me that they're, they know that they don't have good answers.
Yeah. I mean, we have not been engaged in that phase. We are just getting engaged now.
I'm yelling at the wrong person about this.
Well, you might be, but if there's something you think we should know that's relevant to what we are looking at, we're happy to have that discussion.
I just think that North Star should never work with the city of New York again. So, that's how I feel. Luckily, demolition will be done by the end of the month. I have a couple other questions, if the chair will let me...
Go right ahead. You go as long as you want. I don't do minutes.
There's no clock. We're just having fun.
No clock.
Commissioner, I'm sorry. Okay. First up, background checks. So, you know, you mentioned how eager you are to hire your staff, which I certainly want you to hire everybody that you, every line that you have, as do I want every other agency to hire every line that they have. Between the seven rounds of budget cuts and the multiple hiring freezes, and even the two-for-one policy that we have in place now, the mayor has dramatically shrunk city government by tens of thousands of people. One of the obstacles to hiring are the DOI background checks. And so, my numbers and looking at your PMR data year over years, that we've seen a forty-five percent reduction in investigations closed and a fifty percent increase in the amount of time it takes for you to complete a background check. So, that, those are significant problematic indicators that, you know, for every employee that's coming in over $125,000, so all the management in senior, in city government that we need to get into these jobs as quickly as possible, they are slowed down because of DOI's processes. Is that because you don't have the adequate staff to do the work?
Yeah. Let's, let me just back up for a minute here, because we do not pose a barrier to agencies starting their employees, even at senior levels. There are plenty of folks in the city, this is up to the agencies, but people can commence working and often do before their background check is completed. So, I'm surprised to hear that there are folks who haven't started. Now, at DOI, an agency can do this the way they want. We often will not start staff before their background is fully completed.
It's risky.
But even we have developed a sort of tighter, sort of short-form process that we can use just to get someone on board. So, it's not clear to me that delays in agencies starting personnel are attributable to a delay in DOI's background checks. Whether there may be a small increase in the amount of time that it takes, generally, we have significantly decreased the backlog that we had.
I did notice.
And I'll have to find the exact number for you, but we are promptly completing background investigations within a very reasonable time period, and we are not having an issue there, and there is not a staffing problem that is leading to that. And if I can find the exact number, I can cite it for you.
I mean, the average time to complete a background investigation went from one hundred and one days in FY '23 to one hundred and seventeen days for the first four months of this year, a sixteen-day increase, about a fifteen percent increase year over year, which is not a thousand percent increase, but it's an increase. And so, and when it's already taken a significant amount of time, a hundred days over three months, we're now at, we're at four months to get that background check completed now. That's, I hope things have improved in the ensuing few months since the PMR was released.
Yeah.
But those are troubling trends. And I appreciate that you, as you noted, for your own staff, you want to make sure those background checks are completed. You can't have anyone coming on board until we've ensured that they have the absolute unimpeachable integrity that they should have when they're working at DOI. And many agency heads have a similar feeling, that they want to make sure that they're not hiring somebody with a surprise in their background, in their CV, and they rely on that DOI background check. So, I am concerned about the trends, concerned about the number of cases that have been closed. So, just want to, if you don't think there's a staffing issue, I would like that to be revisited.
Yeah, there's not a staffing issue, and sometimes, you know, when we're gathering information, we are dependent on other outside entities to provide that information to us. There are, there's tax information that we need, there's employment information that we need, and it can take time to gather that information. The checks we do are pretty extensive, and the goal has been to complete a background investigation within a hundred and eighty days, and we are, you know, well within that target. And like I said, the backlog, we only have four hundred and sixty-six backlogged investigations remaining. I think that's a reasonable pace for a background investigation, particularly because agencies do have the discretion to start personnel before the background check is completed. We are also always willing, when asked, to provide what's called sort of a quick vet, which is, you know, can you do a sort of quick check to ensure there's no glaring problem that's going to surface later? And then some of the other things we're gathering are educational information, tax information, you know, that kind of thing, property information, financial information, that is unlikely to be a barrier to someone's hiring.
And just for clarification, the PMR tracks background investigations on city employees. Does it also capture, like, daycare workers? Do you know? It does not. So...
I think, I think someone says it does not.
I'm seeing...
That's right. That's because we do the fingerprinting, and we don't do the backgrounding for other employees.
And so, I can see data on the fingerprinting tracked in the PMR, which is maybe a recommendation we can make note for the finance team for, when we, in our council budget response. We get a ton of complaints about, from daycare programs, daycare providers in our communities about delays in background checks. I'll admit, I haven't, for fingerprint checks, excuse, for the fingerprinting that has delayed the hiring, which has delayed having the necessary staff in place for the daycare centers to operate. I will admit, I checked with my staff before the hearing, we haven't gotten any complaints in the last few months. So, you know, maybe that's a, something's working better under your leadership. But is this something that you're tracking carefully? Is there any insider data that you can share with us on delays in processing fingerprinting and any complaints about daycare centers not opening or operating at full capacity as a result?
Yeah. I mean, I know that we also have not received such complaints, certainly not recently. And so, I'd have to look at, look for the kind of data that you're talking about. I certainly don't have it handy, no.
All right. The chair has been incredibly gracious. I have more questions, but I will...
You can go ahead. Keep going.
You sure? I can keep going, one more?
One more.
All right. I'll go for one more. Thank you. I, you know, we're having fun. So, the role of the DOI Commissioner is, is a kind of complex balance, where you're appointed by the mayor and then responsible for investigating him and his agencies if there's misconduct, wrongdoing, et cetera. Could you clarify for us, and I've seen up close, different DOI Commissioners are more or less communicative with City Hall about the investigations that they're undertaking, the complaints that they're receiving, the recommendations that they're making, providing that information in real time, providing that information after conclusions have been reached. Could you share with us how frequently you communicate with City Hall? And are there particular investigations that you've completed that you've discussed with the mayor or with senior-level staff?
So, I have regular meetings with the mayor's chief of staff, with Camille Joseph Varlack. I have regular, although less frequent, meetings with the first deputy mayor, Sheena Wright. I use those meetings for a number of purposes. One is to discuss our budget and to advocate for our needs. The other thing that I use them for is to give a general update on upcoming, let's say, reports that we're doing. So, I will share, just as I've shared with you today, we anticipate in the next couple months that we're going to issue a report on, under local law six, on parking placards. I will not say this is what the report says, this is what the conclusions are, or this is what the recommendations are. Those recommendations and the draft report will be shared with the relevant agencies when it is in final form, meaning we think we have done our job, we know the facts, we know what we want to recommend. We will then share the final draft with the relevant agencies for factual input and correction, if any, and any input they may have on the recommendations, which we may or may not take and incorporate. Once that process is done, the very final draft, like before it's issued, depending on the complexity of the report, a day or two before, or three or four days before, will be shared with senior folks at City Hall, including the chief counsel, the chief of staff, and the first deputy mayor, as, you know, so that they understand what it is that we will be saying. So, that's how I handle notification about reports and recommendations. That is really for notification as opposed to for input. Of course, if anyone had information they thought we needed to know, we would want to hear it, and we would take that input as we saw fit. In terms of other investigations, disciplinary investigations relating to city employees or criminal investigations, I do not share information about the progress of those investigations with City Hall. Sometimes, there are matters that City Hall has referred to us, and so, it's public that we're working on them. Sometimes, they're not. But I do not, I do not give updates on those sorts of investigations. If an investigation, in our view, suggests that there is a safety issue or a serious integrity issue with an employee that an agency needs to know about, we will work within the limitations imposed on us, let's say, by grand jury secrecy rules, to endeavor to make sure that the agency knows what it needs to know so that if it needs to do something for safety reasons, for example, if there's a correction officer who's engaging in misconduct, and we have sufficient certainty about that, and it's reached a point where we think there could be a safety issue, we will want to let that agency know, you need to move that employee for X, Y, and Z reason. Or you need to know what's going on with this employee, and you should make the right, you know, appropriate decisions for safety and care of persons in custody. So, that's a longer answer than you asked for, but I think it's important to be comprehensive on this.
Clear and concise and compelling answer. So, thank you very much for it. Last question I just want to ask is, there's been a series of reports in the press of senior staff at City Hall intervening in public safety projects, like streetcoming projects, intervening on behalf of individual contractors outside of, you know, what would appear to be, to be an appropriate process. I assume you see, read all the same articles that I do. I don't assume that you're going to comment on any active investigations into members of the administration or things that you're looking at. But have you been concerned by the amount of reporting on senior-level Adams officials intervening in projects and intervening in contracting processes that certainly appear to me to be wildly inappropriate and potentially illegal?
I'm not going to offer an opinion on media reports. What I can tell you, as you suggested, is that we pay close attention to all sources of information, including what's written in the press, and when we see something that we think is concerning, we do not hesitate to open an investigation and take the next steps.
Well, I appreciate you being here, and I just want to echo what the chair has advocated for, for quite some time now, that we need to fund our oversight agencies adequately. And so, appreciate her leadership on that effort, among many others.
We fight for oversight money. Councilmember Ayala.
I'm sorry, if I missed, if this was asked and I missed it, I'm trying to do a million things at the same time. But what, generally, how long does an investigation take from the time that a complaint is made to the time that a resolution is, you know, has come to?
So, our target is to complete all investigations within a hundred and eighty days. But I want to be clear that that's, that this is not a one-size-fits-all thing, right? And the most important thing is that we, we conduct each investigation, giving it the time and attention that it needs until it's thoroughly and fully completed. So, generally, it is, it is our goal, I would say, with sort of an average investigation of sort of medium complexity, when possible, to complete it within a hundred and eighty days. And I think as of the most recent data, we're slightly below that number. I think we're at one seventy-four, which is a product of work that we've done to make sure that we're streamlining and moving efficiently those cases that can be moved more efficiently. But I would say there are investigations that take longer. I mean, the PATH report that was mentioned earlier was an example of a very complicated sort of data-based investigation, at least in part. It took a lot of time to work through that information and make sure we understood it, and we'll take the time that we need to.
And the complainant will receive a response after the investigation has concluded?
Well, we will communicate with complainants as, as we need to. So, when a complaint comes in, we may need to be in touch with the complainant to get more information. We don't keep members of the public, including complainants, sort of apprised of the progress. If an investigation is closed as unsubstantiated, it's just unsubstantiated, and we won't, you know, we won't explain sort of the steps that we took. But often, there will be public action, and through that, the complainant will see the steps that are being taken. And there may also be an interview or more in-depth inquiry with the complainant, and so, they will understand from that some of the work that we're doing.
And when the complaint is against a public official, is that complaint handled any differently?
It's not handled any differently. That, that could be a more complex inquiry, depending on what it is, but, but all complaints really are handled consistently. They may go in different directions, whether, you know, they require more or less work, whether they end in a criminal case or in a disciplinary or administrative resolution, but we don't treat them any differently.
Okay. Yeah. I'm particularly asking because I know that we had an incident at Randall's Island. There was a complaint lodged against Mr. Sam Pearson's, and I have, we haven't heard back on what, if any, you know, the findings were. And so, you know, I'm patiently waiting to hear what, you know, what the conclusion was, because, you know, obviously, there were a lot of other people that were impacted by whatever may or may not have happened that day, and I'm sure that they're also eager to get a response.
And we, we work as quickly as we can within the bounds of being, you know, thorough and diligent.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Just one question back to the asylum monitorships. I think in your testimony, you said that the contract ends December twenty-four. Obviously, the asylum seekers are still here, et cetera. So I thought you said that, so I just was wondering, oh, how these contracts get extended, et cetera?
If, if I said that, I misspoke, let me, let me get the...
Okay, I believe you said December 24.
Let me get the, the asylum seeker, oh, I did say December 2024.
I read pretty well.
That's what I have written right here. It's funny, these dates come up quicker than, than one would expect.
Come up real fast.
So what I, what I will say on that is, given, obviously, that this is a priority for the city, it would be my hope and my expectation that to the extent that the expenditures persist and are necessary to persist beyond the end of this year, that we would ask that that contract be extended and that additional funding be allocated.
Okay. The other question I have, just back to those contracts, the, the way that you're operating, it's not really an investigation, it's in a monitorship. And if there's an investigation necessary, fine, but if there's not one, then there isn't one. So in those particular cases, with, you know, seemingly, what you'll be looking at is whether the city's getting its money's worth, basically, from these different contracts. And is that something that, at this point, I guess, I don't know what you can say, there hasn't been any red flag that indicates there's any problem up to this point? Is that generally what you can say about these contracts?
You know, I think that, to the extent that there have been discrepancies in expenditures, those are things that, you know, we have pointed out and that are visible to city agencies from our databases. To the extent that there are other issues that we're following up on, you know, I really, I, I don't want to get into, you know, the, the status of any of that.
Okay. On complaints, I think that DOI received 13,500 complaints in '23. It's an increase of 2,000 from '21. I don't know what it is at the moment. The PMMR said that complaints have increased each year, and it's on pace to increase in '24. Again, I don't know. So my question is, because that's how the public, I assume, contacts you. And sometimes they're frivolous, sometimes they're not. So I just was, I want to know, again, is that one of the agencies that staffed adequately? Is that a number that you expect to increase? And how do you advertise? Even though we think people should know to call you, how do you advertise that you exist? So that people do complain if they see something?
So based on the year-to-date numbers, you're, you're right, that the, the four-month actual in this period for fiscal year '24 is higher than the four-month actual for fiscal year '23, so we would be on pace to increase. And we do a number, so, so complaints, obviously, are managed across the whole agency, so as complaints go up, hence the need for, you know, more staffing, and the way we're asking for, for budgeting this year would, would enable us to allocate that staffing across the investigative squads, for example, as needed. But we do a number of things to get the word out. I mean, one of the important things we do is we do in-person and also remote trainings for agencies, so that we're speaking to agency employees about the anti-corruption rules and practices, and about their obligation to report to us. And I think those are really valuable in kind of getting the word out. And, and sometimes even, people in agencies will call the specific person who did their training, because they feel like, I have a face, I trust this person, I'm going to call that person. So that has been an important source of, of information. We also have, you know, flyers and cards that when we go to agencies, we bring them, we give them out, they have all of our information, they explain how to file a complaint. In the context of, of the asylum seekers, we have, you know, a hotline that's been set up and, and advertised, you know, in various languages and posted at the various sites. So those are all, we also have, and this is very important, our, our individual inspector generals and their teams develop, you know, good relationships with the agency personnel that they work with, and we're not just getting complaints from sort of individuals on the ground who may see something, but also from, you know, more senior folks in the agencies who have a concern or a worry, and will pass that along to us so we can investigate it. So there are a number of different sources. And, you know, I think, you know, to the extent that, that our efforts may have prompted that rise in complaints, I think that's a positive thing. Obviously, if there are more concerns in general, we would say that that's a, that that's a negative thing, so.
It's only positive if you have the staff to be able to address them, too.
Well, that's true.
That's the other issue.
That's true.
I should know this, but if you are, you're, obviously, we focus on city agencies and the city employees and the allocation of funding, et cetera. But you also, we also contract out billions of dollars. So would, do you also look to the contractors, or is it city agencies and what they're doing? I should understand this, but if you could explain.
Oh, in terms of oversight?
Yes.
Yes, we, we are definitely looking at city vendors, city contractors. We have a number of cases, you know, ongoing and, and every year in, in that area, you know. And we also have third parties who may be entitled to, or not entitled to, city benefits that they're getting, who are taking money from the city in that way. But, but absolutely, city vendors are, you know, sort of important components in, in our efforts to make sure that city resources are protected.
Okay. It is frustrating to me and to you, I think also, when you are revenue enhancing, and you went through some of the funds that have come in, that OMB doesn't understand, the more staff, the more revenue, potentially. Obviously, it's like this, what you just said, double-edged sword. If we, everybody was honest, then you wouldn't have any revenue coming in. But unfortunately, I don't think that's going to happen. So is there, I would just, I'm always focused with these different agencies on collecting. I think that would end up probably the Department of Finance and not you. But do you have some sense, when you allocate these fines, if they're actually collected? That may not be your job, but I'm just wondering if that's something that is, is analyzed.
Well, we track both numbers. So we, we track recoveries that are ordered and agreed to. I think that for the most recent period, the number ordered and agreed to is 10.1 million.
Right.
And then we also track what we've actually received, because it can take some time to collect for, for various reasons.
Correct. And, and do you find that it is received generally? In other words, we are finding in other agencies, the Department of Buildings just told us, it's a billion dollars of uncollected, as an example. So is that generally received at DOI?
You know, I have to say, I would want to go back and, and confirm that. Like, I don't have a number I can give you in terms of a percentage. So I do know we look at both, and that information is certainly knowable, but sitting here, I, I actually, I, I need to do more research to answer that.
Okay, I mean, that's something that I think around your agencies may be, your agency may be better at collecting, because it's a different type of...
I mean, these are court-ordered recoveries for the most part.
Exactly. Right. But I'm talking about sanitation and building fees, and they're not court-ordered.
Right.
And they're not paid, in some cases.
Right, that's a, that is a different, different situation.
Very different animal, yep, just wanted to check on that. Let's see, trying to, I, I, I think one of my last questions is just in terms of, I have one more question, hold on one second. We have something here that we want to... I think I just, I want to hear one more time about, because I'm so concerned about the funding that's going to not, or will. What would you say with, if there wasn't this funding, that would hopefully, we can allocate and get included in the 2025, FY25 budget? What would be the areas that you wouldn't be able to cover if that budget is not allocated? Just generally. Again, you've talked about it, but I want to hear it again.
Well, I, you know, I want to, I want to reiterate what, what we said about auditors. You know, we have, we have an excellent auditing team, and they, we, we have some auditors who are embedded in particular squads. We also have a standalone auditing team. They are critical to the complex casework that we do in terms of analyzing financial records. Those are the types of cases that are more likely to lead to financial recoveries. They're cases where you need to follow the money. Some of them involve nonprofit service providers who are way up charging the city, just for example. And so I think getting, getting additional, not only getting additional positions, but getting higher salaries for auditors is something that I think, you know, we need to focus on doing. As I mentioned, I also think we could be doing more with data analytics, and I think that work is a way to efficiently identify areas for investigation that may also be financially fruitful for the city. So that's another area where I think we need more staffing. Our investigators also, right, are the foundation of the work that we do. And, and a lot of the work we do is the sort of day-by-day interviewing witnesses, doing surveillance, receiving complaints. I mean, that is one of the ways in which you build great cases, right? And then you pair that with these other techniques. And I think that is, that is really, you know, how you do sort of cutting-edge work. And, and we need our law enforcement technology folks to support us in doing that also. So their work is really critical, because a lot of what we do now, obviously, involves analysis of electronic devices. We can see who's communicating with whom. You know, there's, there's, there's money movements now, often, that you can see in phones, because there's all kinds of, you know, Cash App and other ways that people move money. So all of the, you know, as I said, it, it really is a full-team effort over here, and we, you know, our operations folks are vital, because they really keep us running, the people who are actually doing the investigative work, and then the auditors, the data analytics folks, the, the digital forensics folks, like, we really need to increase the numbers of all of those people to do what we do in the sort of, you know, fullest and most significant way.
I appreciate the listing and being concrete, because we do need oversight of our agencies, so that's helpful. The Controller did an asylum seeker spending report, as I'm sure you know. And one of the issues for us is, and we hear this constantly, there are so many different agencies doing asylum work, and I understand that we need a lot. But when you've got homeless services, emergency management, DCAST, HPD, and I'm sure I'm leaving some out, obviously H&amp;H in addition, that they do seem to have different spending operations going, you know, arrows this here, and arrows that different, and food is this amount here, and food is that amount there. So is that something that you're looking at? Is that report giving you any information to be able to do your investigations? Is that something that you're taking into, into looking at carefully?
Absolutely, and that, that's really the sort of critical function that the KPMG dashboard and database serves, which is to create a single central repository for all of the contract information that, you know, the city has in the asylum seeker space, so that agencies themselves can see about, as they're engaging in contracting, what other agencies are paying, what kinds of services they're getting. And we can see, hopefully, discrepancies where they exist in, in different services that should cost the same thing.
Okay, we've been joined by Councilmember Creaslin. So I guess I, back to the same issue that at this point, there's, there's no report that is needed, because you haven't found anything that is reportable, shall we say?
Well, we, we have...
But I just feel, you know, listening, having had several hearings on this topic, these numbers are so huge. And, you know, you have wasted food, and we have, in many cases, I think, an awful lot of security. And of course, I'd love to see that money go towards English as a second language or something. So again, maybe not corrupt, maybe not something that rises, but in terms of waste, and that's a concern also.
Well, our, our priority right now has been making sure that, that the agencies in the city have the information they need, so that they can, you know, adjust their decision-making and expenditures where necessary. We're not at the point yet, I think it's, it's a little soon to say whether there's going to be any sort of report issued and what that might say.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. We appreciate that you have such good testimony. I think one thing that I would like to see is more information coming out of the IT at the Police Department, because it seems very quiet, to be honest with you. And I feel, if you feel 18 to 22 staff is enough, then fine, but we, there seems to be, you know, between what's going on with CCRB, what's going on, you know, what are their complaints, what is the, just complaint to the Police Department in general, what are we looking at? So I'd love to hear more about that in the future. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Brewer. We will now turn to public testimony. We will be limiting public testimony today to two minutes each. Please note that if your prepared testimony exceeds two minutes, in addition to testifying before the committee today, you may also submit your full testimony to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. If you are here to testify in person and you have not yet completed a witness slip, please visit the sergeant's table and complete a witness slip now, even if you registered to testify online. For in-person panelists, please come up to the table once your name has been called. For virtual panelists, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the sergeant-at-arms will set the timer and give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your We will now hear from Tawaki Komatsu.
Ms. Brewer, we've talked many times. One of the times we talked was on September 26, 2017. Wouldn't it be something if Mr. Russell would actually stay in the room during a public hearing, so that the public could be heard? He was complaining about people not coming to his meeting, when he has the audacity to walk out, walk out of the room before the public gets to testify. You talked about contract issues. The woman who was just over here, the Commissioner of DOI, talked about that, too. There's a lot of waste, fraud, and corruption with regards to contract issues. I talked to Anne Marie Scalia on Monday, during Ms. Ayala's public hearing. She's the General Counsel of DSS. As you're aware, I've had litigation against HRA, DSS, so forth. They haven't complied with discovery, we've talked about that. So if you're the chairwoman of this Oversight Committee, at what point do I have to stop taking punches to my face, so that somebody like you will actually start doing your job? I have a petition for a writ of certiorari to submit to the U.S. Supreme Court by the end of next month about the fact, about public meetings. That's why I brought that issue up. So bottom line is, at the same time that I'm preparing to prepare that legal brief to submit to the U.S. Supreme Court, I'm getting punched in my face. That is very distracting to my ability to effectively prepare that. So I could go back to DOI to talk to them about that, but you know what? I've been there like eight times, they don't do anything. All they do is refer my complaints back to HRA, DHS, so forth. So the point is, it's like a rape, a rapist. If a woman gets raped by a rape, a rapist, would a police officer refer the complaint back to the rapist for a resolution? So why in the heck does an agency like DOI simply take a complaint, buy a complainant, refer it back to the agency that's the target of that complaint, and have the agency sort that out?
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Yep.
We have now heard from everyone who has signed up to testify. If we inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify in person, please visit the sergeant's table and complete a witness slip now. If we inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify virtually, please use the raised hand function in Zoom, and I will call on you in the order of hands raised. Seeing no one else, I would like to reiterate that written testimony, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. And now I will turn it back over to Chair Brewer to close us out.
Thank you very much to the staff and to the Commissioner and to those who testified, and I hope that we are able to fund this agency to its fullest. Thank you very much.